So, thanks everyone for dialing in. Before we do the roll call, there are two men who died recently that I wanted to remember. First is Reverend Bert Steves. He died last month. He was 94. He was the minister at the Unitarian Church for almost 40 years. He started in 1956. He was involved in civil rights. He helped to found Link House. There's a lot more. I read that he really wanted a brief remembrance though, so I'm gonna stop there. And then just last week, Josiah Welch passed away. Also, I think he was about 90. And, I mean, he was just a giant. He grew up here. Went to college, did a hitch in the army, but he came back. Also in 1956, coincidentally Reverend Steve started. I mean, New Report was well past its heyday. And kind of in freefall and he was a, just as I say, a giant in the community. Just to give you a snapshot, I looked it up. 1960, he owned, he was, he was 30 years old. He already owned and was president of Chase and Lot Insurance. He was on the board of the Five Cent Savings Bank, on the board of the YMCA, and the New Report Health Center, which was a charity, president of the Dalton Club. He chaired the annual fund drives for the WCA and the Red Cross that year. He was on Rotary, Freemasons, it goes on and on. Again, he was only 30 then. So, our condolences to the Steves and the Welch families and especially to Reverend Steve's widow, Maxine, and Mr. Welch's widow, Deirdre Farrell. So let's please have a moment of silence for these two men. Thank you. Let's call a roll.
Well said, Mr. President. Roll call for the meeting of October 13, 2020. Counselor Connell?
Present.
Counselor Shan?
Present.
Counselor Tantar?
Present.
Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Wallace?
Present.
Counselor Zede?
Here.
Counselor Dublin?
Present.
Counselor Khan?
Present.
Counselor Lane?
Here.
Counselor McCauley? Counselor McCauley, do I hear you?
There somewhere.
I, I, I see video, I do not see audio.
Alright, well, maybe he'll join us.
Seems to be present, present. That would be all aboard, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Late file items.
There are three late file items. The first one is Order 215, which is the preservation restriction for central congregational church. There is also Communication 274, which is a letter from Storm Surge. And today I sent out Order 217, which is a late file on a grant exception for election monies. Those are the three.
Have a motion?
Motion to accept the late files and take them up in the regular order.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, Counselor Z.
Right, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm not sure about Order 217, so I'm gonna vote no on accepting that as a late file. I wanna do more research on that one before I, I would vote to accept it, but I'm just noting my objection there.
That's the grant. Do you want, do you want us to take them separately, or we can do that?
It's okay.
Bifurcate them?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor of taking the three, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Okay, so one no for Counselor Z. How about public comment? I don't see anything. So, anyone out there still have a chance, you can raise your hand. You get two minutes. But I think I'm gonna move on from public comment. Mayor's comments. So, let me recognize the mayor. Mayor Holliday, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Great, yes, thank you.
Good evening, counselors. Counselor Agaman, President Agaman, members of the city council. Few items to give you an update on this week. I understand the subcommittee meeting on the MVP grant went really well. I really can't thank you enough for the work that you have done supporting this very complicated project that we have worked on for years. I need to sign the grant with the state, the authorization for the million dollars, and we need the two sub grants from Mass Trails and CPA in terms of making them match and get that into the state tomorrow. Can't thank you enough for this, and then we will be able to put this project out to bid, and we'll come back with you when we have the bid results and with what we need in terms of filling that gap. As you know, we gave you a sampling of where we could find the gap money from existing accounts that are no longer being used. So, we will be back with that additional information once the bids come in. Wanted to report that the shoreline only took three days. Give a lot of credit to DPS, particularly Jamie Tucolo for the research and the work they did, and to TW Excavating. We now have two rows of the super sacks, which are three by three sacks that weigh about 2,000 pounds when filled. It was an amazing project and I think every news station in the greater Boston area was here last week to look at this, and hopefully it will work. And the residents still would like more extension of it, but this is where we are at this point, and we'll hope that it does what we expect it to do. After a little over three years, the resiliency plan is complete. I give tremendous credit to the people who worked diligently on this project. It's several hundred pages. We will post it on the city website. I, being a resiliency plan, I do not want to copy over 250 pages for the city council packet for your next meeting, but I will give you an executive summary and a link to the document on the city website, and then we can have a conversation about whether or not this is something that the council would like to approve, authorize, or just be aware of it and make decisions going forward about how you would like to use this plan. Halloween has been somewhat controversial, but we knew that, given past experience, that kids would be trick-or-treating even if we told them not to, because it's not safe. So instead, what we did was work with Salisbury and Amesbury and came up with a, a plan with high, medium, and low-risk activities with trick-or-treat itself being high-risk, gave other options of what people could do, families could do for Halloween, asking, and we, what's important is that Salisbury, Amesbury, and Newburyport coordinated Halloween, so we wouldn't have people jumping across communities. So that's, it's October 31st. For two hours, it's been posted, it's been coordinated with the chiefs and the marshal from the neighboring communities, just asking that if parents do opt to trick-or-treat, please be sure everyone's wearing masks, that if you are distributing candy, you are outside with gloves and a mask, and that you do not let kids reach into a common bucket to pull out candy, that you drop it into a bucket, or use these tubes that are being promulgated all over Facebook that people are using. And some of our very popular haunted houses are not going to be happening this year in terms of keeping hopefully the numbers down in the city. So that's where we are in terms of Halloween. I did provide you with the supplemental budget request tonight. Had a lot of thought about the reduction of the city councilor stipends. And as we approach an election year, I feel it's really important not to chill potential people who could be interested in running. I believe that every single race should have competitions, so that people learn about your record, your views, your work that you have done, and I, Council President and I have talked about this. He feels it should go to committee if that's the will of the council, and would like to have further conversation with you about this particular order. You also have the purchase of the 57 Low Street. The property that we've worked for three and a half years with the state to acquire. We are getting a municipal rate of $220,000, which it's too good to pass up on this a little over two-acre property, and that we can work together in the future about what makes sense for use in this property. It's unfortunate that we're in the economic situation we're in, but really believe that this is an important piece of property for the city to acquire, and that we are obligated to close by the end of December, so there is time to really vet this process. MOA completed their study, feasibility study on both your request, Low Street and Brown School. Cost to both properties is still much higher than I think any of us would have liked, but they did a presentation to us on Friday and were asking that they, I made some suggestions, and we're looking at the third week in November of doing a a public meeting to present their findings at that point. The final thing I wanted to talk to you about was you are, some of you might have received calls, are aware that our building department is in crisis. How else to describe it? We had our current acting commissioner resign last Monday and began, and we have, have no inspector and no commissioner at this point, and the permits are building up pretty rapidly. So, I was very grateful that Gary Calderwood, our former building commissioner, reached out to me and said he'd be willing to help. So he started back last week. Peter Benet, who's working a four-day work week in Newbury, is also back. He's doing evening Fridays and Saturdays for us. And we also have the building commissioners from Merrimack and West Newbury who are helping out. The building inspector, the building commissioner position had already been posted. We have three applicants so far, and the building inspector position will be posted this week, and we will move as quickly as possible. The other challenging piece of this is Barbara, who is the administrative assistant, now moving into business manager position for that department who's been there 33 years, is also retiring October 30th. So, needless to say that we are really struggling to get this department back in full operations. Barbara has agreed to come back and, and work as a, you know, per diem and transitioning a new business manager and help us through this transition point. So that's sort of the major updates of what's happened since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. Questions for the mayor? I don't see any questions. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay, so back to regular agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yes, thank you.
So, the consent agenda this evening consists of the minutes for September 29th, which have been removed and will be reintroduced at the next meeting at the request of the president. We have four communications. Communication 268, which is a letter from Rita Mahalik on the tax rate to be received and filed. We have Communication 269, which is the annual DPS snow and ice plan to go to public safety. We have Communication 271, which is a letter from Coastal Trails Coalition, support basically for the $1 million grant we just heard about. That's also to be received and filed. Communication 272, which is a revised budget assessment on the Whittia Vote Tech. That's also to be received and filed. There are no transfers through following appointments. First reading. Elizabeth Valeriani, 28, 29 Oak Street to the Emma Andrews until 10:29, 2021, as the following five appointments are also. Elizabeth Watson, 53 Warren Street, Unit 315. Anya G. Elrod, 43 Purchase Street. Virginia R. Champion, 84 Purchase Street. Donna Conway, 27 Marlborough Street. And they are all, as I said, until 10:29, 2021, to the Emma Andrews Library. The following items are removed from their respective communities, committees rather, at the vote on the consent agenda. Budget Finance, Order 212, Communication 263, Neighborhood and City Services, Ordinance 50, Planning and Development, Communication 257, Order 211, Public Safety, Application 10 and 11, Public Utilities Transfer 85, and Order 213. That with the amendment is the consent agenda this evening, Mr. President.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's adopted. Thank you. Now the regular agenda.
Mayor's update.
I don't.
Motion to receive and file.
Written one, Mr. President.
I don't, I don't know that we didn't get a written one, so I think, I think we're okay.
Okay.
There are no second readings, right?
Right. That's correct. Leads us to Communication 270, which is your letter to D.C.A.M.
Okay.
Sure it's a little bit too lengthy to read. What would you like me to do with it?
Well, I'll make the motion. It's my letter. Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next.
Communication 273, which is a letter of non-support from the mayor on the acts of 1987.
Motion to refer to education.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that's referred. Did anything get sent here from consent?
We, we have 274, which is the Storm Surge Communication.
That's right, okay.
So that would be a letter to the council with respect to the shoreline resiliency project. It is a page and a half from the Storm Surge Steering Committee.
And that, that's coming out tonight, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I'm sorry, your motion?
To receive and file, Mr. President.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Keep us going, Rich. What do we got?
Order 214, which is the Low Street Purchase. Says in pertinent part, "City Council hereby approves and authorizes the purchase of a portion of the property located at 57 Low Street." Further order that the appropriation of 220,000 is appropriated from free cash, cash to pay the cost of purchasing said property, et cetera, et cetera. Submitted Counselor Tantar. Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. First, the moving party, Counselor Tantar.
Yeah. Let me just, you know, we have the communication that we just sent to Planning and Development that, that I think is associated with this. I do think the acceptance you know, belongs in budget and finance. But I think we, we're gonna have to coordinate the two committees.
We can do that.
Okay.
So, you know, maybe we should back, back up and refer to this to both Planning, Development, and Budget and Finance, so we can arrange to meet jointly.
Does the second, is, is the other counselor okay with that? The second?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Alright, so the motion on the floor is to refer to both, both committees. Counselor Z.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm, I'm gonna oppose the motion. I don't think this is something that should be going to committee now, and there's two reasons I feel that way. Number one is, given the situation we find ourselves in with the pandemic and the budget and so forth, and the importance of free cash this year, I, I think we should have all the free cash proposals come in together so they can all be considered together. For example, and this will be a common theme unfortunately, is we'll be considering the tax rate in a month or so, and I'm sure that this discussion will come up. That's the first reason why I don't believe this is timely at the moment, that it deserves to go to, to committee for consideration. According to the letter that was submitted with it, their plan is to close on the property on December 31st. So I, I think there is time to have that information first. And then the second item is that, you know, I, I did take some objection to the statement in the memo that said, you know, while the council may have questions and concerns about the future municipal uses of the property, you know, basically hold off on those questions. We should talk about everything separately, and I think that we should have time to get, receive, and go through the so-called feasibility study on the discussion of this property and on, and on the Brown School for consideration for youth services. So, you know, it just, to me, there's some missing pieces here. I, I, I don't think it should go to committee now. It's not ready to be considered until those two things are before us, so I would, I would ask others to consider that position, and there is time, and we can get those two things, and then we can, we can consider this if we still want to at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors? Yes, Counselor Connell.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask a generic question, but I think the counselor from Ward 1 might want to respond. If we don't have a matter in committee before us, what basis do we have for having a discussion that's being suggested about its potential uses? I think once it's in a committee, then we have a basis for discussing a matter that's in the committee, and we can have a, an open and thorough examination of the varied potential uses of such a property. Without it being in committee and being considered, we don't have that possibility, at least at least not in a public setting.
Counselor Z, did you want to respond?
I did, thank you, and I appreciate the point, and I figured somebody would make that point, but my point is, is that we need to, to not put the cart before the horse. The feasibility study is the next thing that we should be looking at before even considering whether we want to purchase a piece of property and for what purpose, and again, to, to the free cash discussion. So, there is no public discussion to be had now, because both of those items require information to come to us from the administration, both on providing the finalized feasibility study, which it, it said is coming in whatever, several weeks and what have you. And I think this, you know, we should, we should as a body press for a plan on the entirety of our free cash. And we've had lengthy debates about whether we can plan for free cash and so forth, but we're talking now about nine months. If we can't make at least some kind of a plan for nine months, then I think we really will have failed. So I don't want to consider any free cash transfer without a, without a comprehensive plan for all of the free cash for the remainder of fiscal year 20, which again is only nine months. And I think we can, we should at least be able to make some effort to look that nine months out, and to do these piecemeal appropriations or piecemeal considerations without having the whole picture.
Thank you. Counselor Devlin is next.
Yeah, did not, didn't we just hear that, that the presentation was made on the two proposals for the Brown School and the, and the, the Low Street property? Why isn't that just submitted with it? I mean, it's, it's not a state secret. If, if it's being adjusted, why can't we see the original raw numbers? That would help in this discussion.
Anyone, anyone on staff want to answer that? Hold on. Chief Coogan.
Thank you. I think the, the, the report is being finalized. It's not in a final form, so it's not, it's not currently available for the council in a, in a good documentation for I think what the mayor was saying though is that, you know, the, the feasibility study is about considering two, two sites. Am I cutting out?
Yeah, yeah, you're back.
Can you hear me?
The discombobulator was on.
Yeah, sorry. You can hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I'm in my basement. Well, basically that, as soon as the plan's finalized, we would, it will be shared with the city council is what I was saying.
Okay, well, I, what do you think? A, a couple of weeks, a week? What?
I think it's, I think the mayor said mid-March would be a public presentation. I would imagine that the plan would be available.
Mid-November or?
Yeah, that's what I meant to say, yeah, November.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
It's the basement talking again.
Yes, exactly. I think there's fumes down here or something.
Counselor Devlin.
Yeah, just a follow-up. I, I thought the mayor had said that they had given a presentation. Why can't we see those presentation materials to go along with? It would make sense that we would see the initial presentation materials that were just made to the administration to go along with this purchase request. I mean, there's, there's some validity to, to both comments, but we're not gonna have anything to compare of what this property is gonna be used for, so this is gonna come out of committee before November. You know, we do need to see something to go along with this. Originally, I'm, I'm usually fine with having these things go into committee, but I don't want it to go into committee and come back out before we've looked at what the options are for using this property and what the cost is.
So I guess, Chief Coogan, the distinctions between the, the report, and I guess there was a PowerPoint on Friday, or presentation?
Yeah, I wasn't at this, it was a meeting.
Well, the, the mayor, the mayor's.
There may have been some visuals.
Yeah, let me, let me call the mayor here. Mayor Holliday.
Thank you. We wanted to start the process. Obviously, you need more information before you begin working on it. There's, you know, we just saw the presentation on Friday and made some recommendations about just some things that needed to be added, deleted, changed, as, as we do with any presentation. It, as soon as it's finalized, you will receive the presentation. But I still don't see any reason why you can't send this to committee. We've had things in committee for months. It doesn't mean you have to schedule a meeting or work on it, but at least it's in committee. We'll give you this next piece. You take a look at this next piece, and then you have time to ask us for any additional information you have. Again, the cost of both sites is, is really prohibited at this point in terms of looking at, at the cost for both renovating the Brown School and for Low Street to move youth services there, as you will see when you look at the numbers. But I will get that information to you as soon as it is completed, and we'll reach back to M.L.A. this week and ask them if they could expedite their work in finalizing their documents so that we can get it to you as soon as possible.
Thank you. Turning back to the council, Counselor Wallace has not spoken yet.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to add that I am the representative for the council that's on the, the committee for the feasibility study. So I believe there is actually a final meeting for the group tomorrow evening. So I have seen various versions of documents, and it is, you know, a kind of a, a changing process. So tomorrow I will have more information, and I would just ask that, you know, maybe after our meeting tomorrow and getting the feedback from the group, that, that, that you know, information gets forwarded to the council as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Back to Counselor Tantar, and then Counselor Z again.
Yeah, I, I would really urge you to, to refer this to committee. I, I mean, I, I think Plan Development Committee will be reviewing the environmental aspects of it. I, I also think that we should consider this property to, to purchase this property for uses other than the youth service center. And if it helps, you know, Counselor Z is on the Budget and Finance Committee. I won't vote this out of committee until such time as we have sufficient information on the alternative uses of this property. So it, it, I mean, that's two votes definitively to keep it in committee until we get that information.
Thank you. Counselor Z, Counselor Shan has her hand up now. I'm gonna have to go to her.
Thank you. I, I just want to ask a question and make a comment. I'd like to know if, if the mayor or, or chief of staff, Coogan, would like to answer. Has, has the administration ruled out a debt exclusion for this project for 2021?
That's a question, yes. Mayor Holliday, Mayor Holliday.
Absolutely. We, at this juncture, were, I participated in a board of directors meeting with MMA this morning as we talked about the economic committee that met at the state last week, and with billions of dollars in debt, and people writing to us, emailing us, being concerned about the tax rate. There is absolutely no way we could even consider a debt exclusion in this climate.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, all you. Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Shan was waiting.
Thank you. I was just going to comment on Counselor Tantar's message stating keeping it a committee. We would do the same thing for planning and development as far as making sure we have all the information necessary before we vote anything out. all the information necessary before we vote anything out. So that would be a, a third vote there.
Counselor Z, it's your turn if you have your hand up and then I'll go to Counselor Devlin. No, Counselor Devlin.
Yes, if, based on those two representations, I can be comfortable, but as long as we're all talking about the same thing, that we get the feasibility study to show what the costs of, of doing certain projects at that, that location is, but based on those two representations, if that's what they're talking about, then, then I'm comfortable with this going to committee.
Thank you. Back to Counselor Z.
Right, my final comment. So I, I try and be a student and learn from previous experiences and this is very similar to me to how, how the garage went. When we were acquiring the land for the garage, we had the consideration for a garage versus a surface lot and so forth. We moved forward with the land purchase without those details in front of us and I just can't do it again. So I appreciate that actually counselors have really tried here to, to offer me some comfort and I'm grateful for that and it actually does help, but it's the same thing here. We, we need to do things in order. And so to me, that would mean, again, getting the feasibility, yes, but also the free cash discussion. So I'll yield and I'm all, I'm all done here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to refer to two committees jointly. Budget and Finance and Planning and Development. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So there's one, one no for Counselor Z.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item would be Order 215, which is City Council hereby approves and authorizes the acceptance of a preservation restriction with respect to the property known as the Central Congregational Church located at 14 Tickham Street.
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's referred. Next item.
Order 216, which is an emergency preamble. Due to the fact that the matter referenced in Order 216, a fiscal year 2021 supplemental budget requires approval to meet the next regularly scheduled payroll in accordance with Charter Section 214. City Council hereby, hereby declares an emergency. Jointly submitted, Counselors Tantar and Connell.
Their, their motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. A second from Counselor Connell. So first I have Counselor Tantar and Counselor Z.
So first of all, just, I'm, I'm not going to get into the substance of this. Just, I just want to speak to the emergency preamble. I think the, the, the reason it's an emergency is pretty straightforward. I think the, the deadline is, is middle of October in order to meet October payroll. And so if we miss it, then, then we cannot address the substance of it in a timely fashion. So that's why I offered the emergency preamble.
Thank you. Counselor Z is next.
Right, I will also keep my comments narrowly tailored to the emergency. So just to recount this, we have a budget, we had a one, three-month budget that we passed after considerable discussion. And then we had, I don't know, some forty, some odd days to review and discuss the budget that came in for the remaining nine months, which is what this addresses. And then we had a long debate on the floor and then we had two votes, one on the cut itself and then one on the final budget. So I, I guess I don't see how that can lead to an emergency because of a payroll cycle. So I'll be opposing this and I'll reserve the remainder of my comments for the substance portion.
Thank you. Other councilors? Let's do a roll call.
A roll call on the motion approved, the emergency preamble. Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Ragman?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item.
That leads us to the order itself, which states, City Council hereby approves the supplemental budget in the total amount of $42,000 to be appropriated for object 51101. Salary of the council, $42,000. Jointly submitted, Counselors Tantar and Connell.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Discussion. Well, Counselor Tantar, did you want to say anything before I go to Counselor Z?
Yeah, let me, I mean, I, I think it should go to committee for discussion. Since we didn't want to do an emergency preamble, can have a fuller discussion in both in committee when it comes out. I'll, I'll just tell you the genesis of this for me. You know, I'm a little embarrassed to say that after serving on the Charter Review Committee, I, I had not remembered this during our discussion when we were dealing with the, the passing the budget, although there's like a little annoying bug in the back of my head that, that sort of sat there for a couple of days. And so two days after we voted on the budget, that Thursday, I, I did look up the, the charter and I, I think we could have a, an interesting legal discussion on this, but clearly the spirit of, of the, of the charter, all right, is, is to be found in the second and the third sentences. Second sentence in Section 24 of the City Charter indicates that no ordinance increasing or reducing the salary of members of the City Council shall be effective unless it's been adopted by two-thirds vote. And the third sentence, the paragraph, no increase or reduction, such salary shall take effect during the term in which such increase or reduction is voted. And so I think, I would argue that our acts in, in zeroing out the line violates at a minimum the, the spirit of the charter and therefore warrants another examination. Possibly the law too. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Z then Counselor Connell.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I'll, I'll be opposing this going to committee. I think we're all a little bit frustrated, understandably so, but as I sort of alluded to during the emergency preamble discussion, we actually have had this discussion at length. And I guess it's, 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 it would be new to me that we're going to, to not accept the city solicitor's advice. In the past, when I've questioned it, it's been taken as, you know, this is gospel and this is the truth and the city solicitor has made it very clear and the council president emailed to this effect that no law was broken when, when the city council decided to cut that line. I guess there's a new argument about the spirit of the charter and so on and so forth, but I think that all of that is sort of just, you know, in a sense, taking on a, a different discussion than really what's at stake here and avoiding the underlying discussion, which, which is what we had a couple of weeks ago. I made the motion to make this cut. The idea was to make a shared sacrifice in, in terms of having a difficult time. It was a short-term sacrifice. There's nothing in the language of the cut or anywhere else that would change the, the salary of the city council on any sort of long-term basis, but rather this is for the next nine months. And instead of having that conversation, we're going to argue about whether it's, it's violating the spirit of the charter. And I think that's kind of unfortunate because that's not the discussion that I was trying to have and I don't think that's the discussion we did have two weeks ago. And I'll just remind folks that the vote in favor of the cut was seven to four. That was one vote. And then the final budget passed 10 to one. So there's two opportunities there to have this conversation and do it. And so I guess it's, I don't know why we would want to have that conversation again, just two weeks removed from a difficult night. Just a couple of last comments. First one is, we spend a lot of time, I think, on the council discussing, you know, how to make new report affordable, how to help people who need help. We had long discussions about 41C, 41C and a half. We have discussions about affordable housing, Brown School and on and on and on. And we often lament the fact that we don't have a lot of control over some of the market forces and we're never going to get control over that, but we did have control over this and we made a decision and we made it together and it was shared. It was not meant to target any one person and I did feel that the discussion on health insurance went in that direction unfortunately. And so now we're back to this again and we've got to basically have the conversation again because of the spirit of the charter, which I simply do not frankly understand. And so I don't see why we'd want to send the committee and have that painful conversation all over again. So with that being said, you know, I, I hope that, and, and I just want to say one other thing too, and that is that, you know, at the end of the night, we had made our cuts as a body, we had made whatever cuts and that money should be going to the taxpayers. So we're on a slow-moving train here to, to setting a tax rate and probably in a month we're going to have that debate and I can already see some of the arguments coming, but we're paving the road to that, to that. And anybody who's done more than one budget knows that it's a building thing. You don't just end up at a tax rate by accident. The steps you take play a role. So when the mayor was asked, what would you do with the cuts? The answer was to hire a mechanic. But what about the taxpayers? Why not give the taxpayers back the 115 grand? Is it because you don't think there's any value in that $115,000? I do and people could certainly use the help. So in the municipal world, looking at the budget and so forth, looking at purchasing yet more land to, to potentially build another building at some point now or in the future, kind of business as usual, but it's a little tough out there and I think we had this debate and I don't think we need to have it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Connell is next.
Thank you, Council President. I am one of the co-sponsors here wanting to actually move forward with this. Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
You're back, yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, sorry, I, I'm one of the co-sponsors here. I'm also someone that was in favor of zeroing this, this line item. So for me, when I had learned that, you know, this is a way in terms of setting salaries for a city council, I guess school committee and the mayor is done here by this body of city counselors through an ordinance, it was kind of, to me, I thought that it was, looked like we did something that may not have been the proper action, which is why I supported this direction. And in researching it just a little bit more, because again, I, I don't want at all belabor anything from the work we did two weeks ago. That was a really long night for all of us, but I do want to do the right thing and I don't want to, just because we had that painful conversation, doesn't mean that if we think that something may have been done in error or if we're setting a precedence for something that might continue to move forward that way, we shouldn't, it shouldn't stop us from taking the actions we thought or we believe in doing. So in trying to understand this issue, you know, it's also a little unusual because we weren't approving a budget that was looking at a fiscal year that started yet. So we already actually entered the, the fiscal year. So we had the three-month appropriation that we did. This was already a salary that we've already started getting. So to me, in reading through, and, and I'll just look at, I think one of the things I looked at was the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33A, where it talks about salary provisions and budget. And it says, "The annual budget shall include some sufficient to pay the salaries of officers' employees fixed by law or by ordinance, notwithstanding any contrary provision of any city charter nor ordinance providing for an increase in the salaries or wages of municipal officers or employees, which shall be enacted by two-thirds vote of the city council." So I did see later that the guidance from the city solicitor and, you know, I am a little puzzled, which is why I do think maybe it is worth sending to committee so that we could have clarity on this and then move forward so that we understand this fairly well, because we did zero out a line item that is related to a, a change that normally would happen for salaries by two-thirds vote. So for me, I, I think it could just be beneficial to send it to committee, to have the discussion, to educate ourselves on this so that in the future, if something comes up, we could say, okay, we've talked about it, I clarity on this MGL section that I'm seeing here too. So, so I would just ask that we, we make that consideration because this might come up again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Devlin is next.
Yes, I did contemplate this. I did read the charter. I was one of the people that was going to make this motion as well, including one of the sponsors of this who did, in the last meeting, say that she was going to. I believe that, that the counselor actually seconded it and beat me to the second, but I could be off on that one. So I did contemplate this issue. I actually did have a discussion with the sponsoring Counsel Z on it as well, or the motion, the motioning Counsel Z on it as well. And the intention and my intention was, this is an appropriation and we are allowed in the budget to, to zero out a line item appropriation. It is clear, it is, this is not something that you have to look at chapter, section, Chapter 44, Section 33. This is clear as it can be. We are allowed to zero it out. We haven't done it on some salary increases that were controlled by a union contract because we were worried that the union would go on strike when we did that. We had made a three-year contract with them, but that's not, we have the power to zero out line items in the budget and we have the power to zero ours. I'm sorry that some people were on the losing end. You don't get a second bite of this, unfortunately. You don't get a second bite of this because of the spirit of the charter. We have clear direction from our legal counsel now that says that the very thing that I was going to base my motion on and that I did in contemplating this motion so that we don't waste a lot of time, that I did think about this. I just, we work hard enough that two weeks later, we're going to have the exact same discussion in, in committee on something that unfortunately it, it lost seven to four. And I, I think if we're redoing things and second guessing votes from two weeks ago, we, we've got to put more thought into the budget process and, and the cuts that we do move for and the cuts that we do vote for, because we're just repeating work. But, but we are, and, and the city solicitor agrees with my view from the email that I saw today from three and a half weeks ago, where I said, we're making a short-term cut. It's not permanent. It's for nine months. It's even better. It's not for the full year. It's not for 12 months. It's for nine months. We have agreed, at least seven of us, that it's worth it for us to make that sacrifice in a very troubling and trying time, you know, to help out with this, other parts of the city budget. And, you know, it, we have the full power and it's nine, if we wanted to change it like the discussion was last year, it would have to be done by ordinance. So, so one of the sponsoring counselors last year proposed a raise and, and that can only be done by statute as well. We can't increase our line item. But this discussion happened last year as well. There is nothing new here and there's nothing new that's going to be discovered. We have the full power to do it. We did it. Unfortunately, it was seven to four vote and I think we're stick with it and I don't want to put this in committee because I, I don't want to, I don't want to set the precedent that we're going to be relitigating things every two, two, two weeks. If this is a case where we went against our charter and somebody feels that it's important enough, they're, they're, it is not for us to reconsider. It would be illegal and their job would be to go to court and get an order saying that we can't do what we did. But it's not for us to go back and determine whether we did something, you know, to ourselves, by the way, that, that wasn't legal. You know, we've got an opinion from city solicitor that said we can do this and, and it dovetails with my own view of this, which is we can cut the appropriation temporarily for the year. It, it doesn't take it off the next year. The, I don't understand what the mayor was saying about wanting it for elections next year. The next budget that she presents, she can put it back in. And, you know, frankly, if, if we're out of the fiscal crisis and, and things are looking better, I certainly will vote for it and that vote's going to happen hopefully in the normal time during the summer like it, like it has in the past. And so it'll be done in plenty of time for, for the elections come next November. Thank you. So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to skip the Counsel Vogel because he hasn't spoken yet.
I'll, I'll yield to Counselor Tantar for a moment.
Okay, Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, first of all, just, I, I, I think the, the, my friend, the Ward One Counselor attributed motivation in, in saying that I targeted one individual on health insurance that, I, I wanted to be clear, I did not. I was targeting a principal. If the principal is that we are going to zero out council compensation, then we should zero out council compensation. I wanted to test that. Majority of the council didn't go along with that. And so, you know, I, you know, I was just trying to point out the, the contradiction in, in whatever the principle was that the majority was trying to vote on. Secondly, I have to disagree with the at-large counselor. I have to disagree with the at large councillor, you know, and quite frankly, I have more legal questions, given what the city solicitor wrote, that given the fact that he did not refer to chapter forty four, Section thirty three A. I mean, again, to read that sentence, the annual budget shall include sums sufficient to pay the salaries of officers and employees fixed by law or by ordinance. We are officers, all right? All right, it says, it doesn't say may, it doesn't say could, it says the annual budget shall include sums. And for that reason at all alone, I think we should send it to committee for reconsideration. And I think the council should send it. And I wonder, I mean, I think there's a broader, there are broader implications here. If, you know, if we by zeroing out a line, all right, can alter the will of the people, and that's what the charter is, this is the will of Newburyport voters, right? It's another councillor in a different context once said, this is sort of the equivalent of our constitution. All right. If we can abrogate that constitution, that charter, by zeroing out an appropriation line, then what else can be zero out? You know, the voters wanted a strong mayor and voted specifically to increase the salary in the charter discussion 10 years ago and approving the charter. Can we zero out the mayor's line because we disagree with that? All right, can we zero, you know, the provisions in the charter for having elections? Can we zero that out? Right. So I, you know, there is this broader question, can we use our appropriation power to get around the will of the people?
Okay. Councillor Vogel, go ahead. Again, just to remind everyone, this is whether to refer it to committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Tantar spoke to a great number of my points, especially the point, there is new information here to be discussed. And the councillor at large said, there's nothing new here. We're well within the bounds, etc., etc. We need to understand the mass general law. We need to, we need to debate this in committee. We need to take a look at this thoroughly. And I think to avoid doing that is is really shameful. This is hugely important and to all the points that councillor Tantar made. I urge you all, we need to talk about this. This is, this is, we're treading on some some thin and really some potentially dangerous ice here.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Wallace hasn't spoken yet.
Sure, thanks. You know, I'm not going to change my vote based, you know, from, you know, a couple of weeks ago, because I knew what I was voting for. But at the same time, I don't have a problem discussing it more in committee, because I know that the councillor salaries, I think it was last year, there was there was proposal to increase the salaries. I think it's a worthwhile discussion to have. But I do want to say that I won't change my vote, because I, you know, like I said, I knew what I was voting for. And but again, I think it doesn't hurt to talk about it some more.
Thank you. Councillor McCauley.
Excuse me. I have a question for the sponsors. Is there anything else from the budget discussion that we can add on here that we can reconsider? We're reconsidering, are zeroing out of the appropriations? Are there any other line items that you feel we can also add to this and reconsider from our discussions from two weeks ago?
Councillor Khan.
Sorry, I had my hand raised for something else, not for that. Can I, can I speak to what I was gonna say?
Sure, go ahead.
I'll answer, councillor.
Oh, go ahead, councillor Tantar.
I don't have any other lines that I want to reconsider, because I don't think any of them are conflicted with the charter or state law.
Okay. Councillor Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I guess I'm a little sad that this conversation turned into something that wasn't the intent. So the only reason, I just want to be honest, you know, I would not change my vote on this, too. I'm the one that I was one of the ones that wanted to zero it out. And I was fine with that. But the only reason I, it's the legal aspect. And I think it's sad that wanting to get some clarity on the legality, I mean, it might be clear to some of my fellow councillors, but it's not clear to me. And so it just seemed like this was a small step to do, to get some clarity around that. And again, I didn't see the guidance until later that we got something from Mark Rich. So I actually didn't even see that till earlier today. So that that is helpful. But again, I'd love to have this back and forth and understand what I read from looking at the Massachusetts General Law. So if it goes into committee, and it seems like what we did was okay, then I would still support my stance on it. So it's not like I want to reconsider. And I'm kind of sad that we're going down that, that that's kind of being alluded that we want to go back on decisions we made. And so really, I'm coming at it more from an educational piece and just a way to understand that. So moving forward, we could also look back and keep that legal guidance and saying that that was an okay action to do. That's really my intention. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Zeta's hand up. But before this goes farther, just remember that the city solicitor is our lawyer. So really, never be sheepish. Any councillor, if you have a question on something, just bring it to me. I'm the clearinghouse as the president, and I can get them on the phone, and I can have them come talk to us, all that good stuff. So it doesn't, there doesn't need to be a motion ever to do that. You just contact me. We always have the ability to contact our attorney. Councillor Z.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond. So I'm at a loss as to how, so you know, one, as a city councillor gets the packet on Thursday, and you know, we all do our due diligence, and we go through the packet. But just to, you know, just to just to tell you how this was received in response to the at large councillors, this is a, this is in order to restore the cuts. And it came with an emergency preamble attached to it that it needed to be done tonight. So I'm respectfully, I'm not sure how a councillor should react to this. I came in ready to have the argument. That's, that's the way it reads in the packet is, I've got an emergency preamble, I want this tonight. And the argument is, I want to restore $42,000 to 51101. So I mean, no one, I've never taken any issue with fact finding or whatever the case might be. But just please understand, that's not what's in the packet. If somebody in the public read this, I don't see how they would come to that conclusion that this is an information gathering kind of thing. So I just wanted to make it clear as to how or why I prepared in this way. I don't, I don't see what choice I had based on what was in the packet.
Thank you. Back to councillor Tantar.
You know, the answer to that is, we had not anticipated, as a sponsor, I certainly did not anticipate that that councillors would react to to what it said in the charter, the way that they have. And so it seems to me that I'm not the only one with questions. I think a lot of councils have questions. I, you know, some of us have questions about about the law, whether what we did abrogated the charter and state law. And and I think, I thought, I think it's actually pretty evident that it did, in spite of what the city solicitor wrote. And I would, to the council president's statement, I would love to have the city solicitor meet with Budget and Finance while we discuss this. Because I, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I have a lot of questions on his statement. It was brief. I didn't see any argument. I saw a declarative statement. And I would need a lot more than that to base any vote, quite frankly. And I'd like to have them committee.
Okay, well, we'll definitely, we'll definitely get more from the city solicitor in any case. I hear that loud and clear. Other councillors on the motion to refer to Budget and Finance. Councillor Devlin. Councillor Devlin.
Yeah, just to answer my at large sister's statement, I, you know, I didn't mean anything personal by it, but, you know, we, this sets, I think, a more dangerous precedent that we're going to go back. There are, it appears to me, you know, you know, there are, you know, this is an effort to relitigate this and to revoke this, because there are other ways of accomplishing this. There could have been, you know, a letter submitted that that gets put into committee where we could use it as a discussion point. We could ask the 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 city solicitor for a legal opinion that gets submitted. And again, so this looked like, you know, this appeared by all intents and purposes, and kind of surprised me, to be honest with you, because a seven to four vote is a fairly, you know, convincing vote. And it kind of surprised me that it was that we were putting, it really feel felt like we were going back two weeks and having going to have the same argument. I still think we're going to have the same argument. In one breath, a councillor is saying, you know, I don't agree with the city solicitor's statement. But then the next breath, it's, I want to have this city solicitor so, because I'm not a lawyer, and I want to hear him answer my questions. You know, look, again, there's many ways to take care of this. And look, if people are feeling that they have been aggrieved, the ordinance, I mean, the charter does not say, it says that that, you know, the the city council will be, its salary will be, they'll be paid as set by by ordinance. The ordinance was set, and we are now, we also have concurrent powers under our budget powers. I just frankly, it's a meeting I don't want to go to, and I'm gonna have to go to, because I feel strongly about this. And and I feel just as strongly and passionately as I argued about it previously. And and there are other ways to present this, a heads up phone call, you know, to the to the to somebody would have would have been helpful. Instead, I feel like there was some some outreach to the city solicitor by the mayor's office first. That doesn't seem to be in the spirit of finding out answers. You know, I was one of the people, I either seconded the motion, or I certainly made the statement that I was going to make the motion. And and I made arguments for the shared sacrifice and assigned to the to the to the residents that were willing to take some sacrifice in these difficult times as well, and contribute in any way we can. And, you know, I just, you know, we're relitigating this, and there's many other ways to do it. And I just didn't think it had to be presented as an ordinance, because if this comes out and gets voted, you know, now we're back into the same argument again. So anyway, that's, I, again, I won't be supporting this. And I wish others would join me as well.
Okay. Councillor Tantar.
One more point, on the paragraph in the charter on council compensation, there are three sentences. The fourth sentence refers to necessary expenses. And it reads, subject to appropriation, members of the city council shall be entitled to reimbursement of their actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of their duties. The clause, subject to appropriation, is missing in reference to city council compensation, right, for reimbursement for expenses. It says, subject to appropriation. The authors and the voters in approving this, I would say, did not intend, all right, to the first three sentences, to be subject to appropriation, otherwise they would have said it. And so this is a lot more complex, I think, than a number of people making it out to be. And I, and I'm trying to avoid getting into why this is here, which we've never really talked about, right? I think we all understand why the city council, councillor should not be able to increase their salaries, right? But this says during the term on this still, this says, it's, we should not be able, we should not decrease our salaries. And the good reasons for that, that we have not discussed. I'll leave it there.
Okay, councillor Wallace.
Sure, just one more point, too. I just want to say, I agree with the councillor at large, councillor Khan, that reading the language, you know, I understand her intent here. And reading the language, I'm not an attorney, you read that in the charter, and you say, oh, wow, okay, that that makes sense. Maybe we really do need the two thirds vote and whatnot. But and then we got the brief decision from the attorney. But again, I think it's, it's not too much of a of an effort to have the discussion, invite the attorney along. And the other thing, too, is this could impact what is put in the charter. So depending how this is interpreted, and I know the charter is still being edited, or I don't even know where it is in the process. But if, if in fact, that, you know, the the city attorney is correct, maybe it's something that would go into charter revisions in the future.
Thank you. Last call. Any further argument? Roll call.
Roll call on the motion to refer to sixteen to Budget and Finance. Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tantar.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
No.
Councillor Devlin.
Oh.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCauley.
No.
Councillor Agnew.
I think I better stay out of it because of the health insurance. I'm abstaining.
Abstain, one. Motion passes. Three notes.
Okay.
Add as referred.
Did we have any of the orders, any other orders that came in? Yes, we did.
We have Order two seventeen, which is a acceptance of a grant donors, the Center for Tech and Civic Life, amount of $7,000, purposes for planning and operationalizing safe and secure election administration, City of Newburyport, submitted councillor Tantar.
Councillor Tantar gets to go first, if he wants to say anything.
Motion, sorry, motion to approve to Budget and Finance, to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Okay, any councillor, councillor Z.
Yes, just briefly, I know I'm on a roll tonight with referring things to committee, so I apologize. But this was a late file, and I I'm very skittish about things having to do with money and elections. And I don't feel comfortable taking this into committee until I get more, learn more about what the Center for Tech and Civic Life is. My only time this afternoon was a brief search, said that basically this is money flowing from Facebook into this organization, whatever it's all about. And then I'm not sure where the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Elections Division falls into it as well. But I'm not prepared to even take it into committee without having those details at hand. I'm really, get really skittish, like I said, about money like this and elections, and what does it all mean? And so, you know, there wasn't an accompanying memo and so forth to even get a sense for what it is. So I think we should, you know, we should talk about spending money. I mean, seven grand to spend on elections, to me, is is no big deal if it's a matter of keeping external influences from happening. But again, I don't know if that's what this is. I really have no idea. So I'll oppose.
Thank you. Councillor Connell is next.
Yes, I believe the Ward one councillor has made my argument for me, but I've come to a different conclusion. I too scratched my head over this and wondered, where is this money coming from? What is the purpose truly? Is it to influence us in a way that we might otherwise object to? If we don't examine it closely, we'll never know. So the vehicle for making heads and tails of this is actually sending it to committee, examining it to the best of our ability, doing some research, and coming back to the full council to decide if this is something we want to participate in by accepting the grant. So I'm going to argue that we should, in fact, send it to committee, look at it closely, get answers to the questions, which the Ward one councillor and perhaps many others of us have, and then make an informed decision. So I'm going to vote in favor of sending it to committee, and I urge my colleagues to do so.
Thank you. Councillor Tantar.
Yes, I was informed by the city clerk that, you know, runs our elections, that they that they saw this grant out there, they went for it. And so perhaps he could help us in terms of strings attached. But I also agree with the at large councillor that we can get that information committee. And I can't understand the rationale for not sending something to committee.
Okay.
We're going to get information.
Okay, before I go back to councillor Z, I I've lost the string. What was the, what's the motion on the floor? Where are we sending it?
Budget and Finance.
Okay, well, I just looked up the code. If it's Board of Registry stuff, it should go to general government, just just seeing. Okay, well, I, I just looked up the code. If it's Board of Registry stuff, it should go to general government, just, just so you know. That's the only thing I'll point out. Counselor Z.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to answer about the rationale question. So, you know, this has kind of become somewhat of a recurring theme. Hey, here's something you should approve, but there really isn't all the information that goes with it. So why don't you chase the information in committee? I do think that we have some right to expect some set of information to come in with things before we send them to committee. It's cat and mouse. I mean, we talk about, okay, does the council derive any power from having salaries? That was an argument made a few weeks ago. We argue about what the role of the council is. I guess the ability of the city council to cut is, is, is a debate as well, et cetera. But you know what? At some point, you, you, you should, you know, and, and it's not just us. This is what goes into the packet. In fact, this one was a late file, so it wasn't even in the packet for the public to review. And so now we're supposed to send it to committee and then we're supposed to do the work to chase down all the information. I mean, there has to be some balance point here. We're being fair to ourselves and fair to the public. That's the rationale for not sending it to set a standard for what should come in with something, a transfer in order to accept the gift, et cetera. And with something as important like this, elections, yeah, I think the bar should be pretty high. And so a minimal, minimal set of information at least, I think, would be sensible. And so that's, that's, that's the, that's the answer that I would give.
Fair point. Thank you. Back to Counselor Tantara.
You know, first of all, as to which committee it should go to, I mean, I moved to go to budget and finance because grant acceptances have all, always gone to budget and finance. Secondly, but, you know, I have no objection to it going to another committee, but, but, you know, we've, this is what we've done with grants. Secondly, we've, we've referred grants to committee with a lot less information actually than this, this, this. It's offered through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Elections Division. And, you know, so that, that makes a difference from a lot of grants of receiving. I think there's actually more information. But, you know, again, I, I would ask the city clerk if he wants to offer any information he might have on this that would help people at this point.
Mr. President, I'd be happy to comment if.
Yeah, why don't you jump in?
Yeah, I mean, this is what I know about it. The Elections Division, Secretary of State's office, that we work closely with, we have emails and advisories from them almost every day, said a couple of times, please look at this, please apply, we have vetted it. We think there's certain monies that you might be able to obtain. And it's a fairly straightforward application process. So, I mean, to be quite honest, I really didn't have time to do it. I get a lot of links, I get a lot of emails and I thought, well, if it's simple, we certainly could use the money for elections, because this one is a very expensive election. So I applied for it, probably took a half hour. And then a week later, they sent me an email and said, actually it was over this weekend, and said, you've been awarded $7,000 for certain operational expenses. And so I thought, well, that's great for the effort. Sent it to Ethan Manning, who's on the line, and said, Ethan, what do you think? What do we do with this grant procedurally? He said, great, this is what we do. There's an accompanying contract that the mayor needs to sign, which we could, certainly could have included. And then because it's over $500, it needs to go to the city council for approval. Of course, I was okay with that. And he said, but you know what? I, I know it's late, let's see if we can just send it to committee. If you, if you can put it in as a late file, which I asked the president, he agreed to, we'll discuss, you know, the matters in committee, because the election is November third, times of the essence. And our next meeting, I think, is several days before that Tuesday, November third election, last Monday in October. So we don't have a lot of time. So then Ethan actually did some research, frankly, more than I did, because I, I'm, we're just straight up, as you know. And he found the connection to Mark Zuckerberg Facebook. It was a $250 million fund set up by Facebook. It's Facebook money. And, but the state felt there's no strings attached to it. So, in, in other words, the money doesn't come in and say, Richard Jones, as city clerk, you need to spend it on this, this and this. There's certain categories, yes, but it's very generic. So Ethan probably could jump in. He actually spent more time researching it than I had time for. But I do apologize, it should have had at least a letter with it. I didn't do it. Or Ethan didn't do it. I blame Ethan too.
Well, let me, no, thank you. Let me recognize Ethan Manning. Yes, I was asked by the clerk if I would accept this as a late file. I don't have to always put it in and I said, yes, so. Director Manning, you are unmuted.
Thank you very much. That's just to add on to what, what Richard was saying. The grant did just literally come, come in over the weekend, so we wanted to, you know, get it on your docket for review prior to your next meeting, because approving it after the election would render the grant useless for us. So that was the reason that I, that Rich and I talked about, you know, sending this in as a late file, so that it could, you know, if it was going to be accepted, that it would happen prior to the election, to give us a chance to actually spend it. Because the, the provisions do say that it needs to be spent for the calendar year 2020 election. So it's really, we use it now or we don't. So that was the rationale behind that. As Rich said, we'd be happy to, to send the, the, the sample grant agreement that they sent. But really, the reason for the late file was just to get it on your docket, so you could discuss it. Personally, I don't know much about the particular organization that Facebook donated to. However, there was kind of a, a long, was served discussion with the Massachusetts accountants last week about how cities and towns were seeing this grant, you know, what do we do with it? But kind of the general consensus was that cities and towns are, are accepting this grant at the direction of the State Elections Division. So that's, that's all I know. If this is referred to committee, I'd be happy to do more research or help you in any way possible.
Thank you, Director. Back to the council, so Counselor Z.
Right, thank you. I just, so I just wanted to say, I mean, it, it kind of proves the point. I mean, now we're, we're doing something on, on this timeline for $7,000, having to do with elections. I mean, that should make everybody nervous, frankly. And, and I, I mean, you know, I'll just leave it at that. I, I don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on referring this to budget and finance. Seeing none, let's, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No. So one, one no, Counselor Z. Where are we?
There are no ordinances. That would leave us, I believe, to committee.
Okay. Economic Development has not met committee on Central Waterfront. We're meeting on, next week, right? Next week. Budget and Finance.
Motion to receive and file communication two sixty-three.
Second.
So this motion, I think the council and the public is, is aware of it, because it came up during the budget process. We already did cut the line for Woody of O-Tech. However, because of the chatter, which we followed in this case, the Essex North Shore Technical School, we couldn't raise that amount. We're not allowed to do that. So we consider this to receive and file, and what we'll need is a supplemental budget for $18,000 to come from the administration. So this is just a receiving file at this point.
Thank you. Any other?
Three zero, by the way, in committee. Sorry.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? That's received and filed.
Motion to approve order two twelve, which some late, prior fiscal bills that came in late, actually.
Second.
Mr. President, the committee voted three zero to recommend approval. These, pretty straightforward. These are bills that came in after the, after we, you know, finished the budget out of the fiscal year and, and we've done this in the past. And for the previous fiscal year, the bills came in late and we recommend the supplemental budget for them.
Thank you. Other counselors? All right, let's do a roll call on this one, just for the record.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve order two twelve. Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
I'll vote yes too.
Thank you. Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Argon.
Yes.
Eleven yes. Motion passes.
All right. Chair Tantara, anything else on budget?
All done, Mr. President.
Thank you. Education.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I hope you guys could hear me well. I think my connection's not very good. Okay, my apologies. Yes, the Education Committee met on Monday last week, October fifth, and we did actually meet in person at the senior center. And I have to say, I think it went okay. We, I, I believe the participation from the public, we, we didn't have them there in person and we tried to use the Zoom capability to keep the meeting available and open to the public. And we did just have, I think, Jane Snow in attendance, who did say that at times it was hard to hear us. So we're, we're gradually, I think, chime this out to see if it works well. The, the school committee members that are part of the Education Committee, we have a school committee member, Riordan, Callahan and Menin are part of our Education Committee. And they meet in person at the senior center, so it made sense for us to try to convene together. We did have the superintendent in attendance as well. I would say that some of the conversation did talk a little bit about how the school committee does some of their business. When things come into their packet, do they send it to committee? So for example, school committee member Riordan mentioned that the metrics word document that we had all received before we had our conversation on the budget two weeks ago, that was coming to them. It came to us first, but now it was coming to the school committee for them to deliberate, discuss and vote on. So that was important for us to understand, you know, their process, you know, their way of accepting things. And how could there be more of a transparent, public dialogue with everybody on things like that? And so one of the things that came out of that too is the reopening plan. And once that reopening plan makes any changes, what does that mean? How does that go through an approval or a vetting? And one of the things that I would say my colleagues on the Education Committee talked about was trying to keep that open and transparent to us to see as well, whether it's just us as the council or the Education Committee, but the broader us in terms of the community being involved and informed on each of those steps. And that was something that the superintendent did hear and acknowledged and said that the, the process would be definitely made available either through the school committees packets, if there is any modification, communication that way. And then obviously with this Education Committee venue as well. We do have two more meetings. We tend to meet monthly is, it was a little bit more frequent before, so our next meeting will be in November. We did send the communication from the mayor on the reaction or the response to the acts of 1987. I'll let folks know here when we plan on, on discussing that. I also want to let folks know that the strategic plan for the school, which is done every five years, is in the process of being done and that the superintendent mentioned that they would by November be starting the, the process of forming the task forces that would be brought to talk about the strategic plan. And I'm hoping one of us on the Education Committee will be able to sit on that task force as well. I believe that's all I had, but I, I am open if there's anything I missed. I wouldn't mind at all if my committee members wanted to chime in. Counselor Connell wasn't able to, to join us, but Counselor Z was there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Counselor McCauley has his hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I, I'd like to, Mr. President, I'd like to ask the chair a question. I too was in attendance with Jane Snow in, in Zoom land. And I just, I, I'd like to ask a question and I, I know it's gonna be kind of awkward. I, I just want to preface that upfront. So it appears that when, when they reviewed the process between the school administration and the school committee, that the metrics and the reopening plan was submitted with the budget was not vetted and approved by the school committee prior to it coming to us. Is that correct?
That was my understanding. And so, sorry, Counselor, you were on and my apologies for that.
That's okay.
Yeah, but my understanding too was exactly what you, what you surmised, which is one of the reasons I think why we kind of were a little bit, I think the school committee too, the, the three members there were also, I think, trying to, to make that point is this would be helpful to see and be able to, to have some decision and deliberation on.
Yeah, I, I think, thank you very much for that. I, I, I think this is, this is one of the points that we brought up during the budget debate in terms of accountability and process. And when we talk about following the process and let's say, following the rules, in many ways, this, everyone's in an awkward position because of the, the infamous pandemic. But we, we approved the budget on a plan that wasn't vetted by the school committee and that's our process. So we should, we should learn from that, right? And, and next year, when we get a budget, we've got to make sure that the plan, the budget, the, the savings that should go to free cash, all of those things, I think need more scrutiny and more accountability to the taxpayers. And, you know, it, it leaves everyone, my question was awkward to begin with. And simply because it's, it's awkward for the school committee to get a plan after we get it, it's awkward for us to vote on something that hasn't been fully vetted. And the numbers, you know, it's one thing if it's thirty or forty or $50,000. It's another thing when it's thirty-two, thirty-five million dollars. And there's, there's potential for gaps here. And I for one would look forward to us trying to work together with the school committee to close those operational gaps and communication gaps going forward. So kudos to you guys for raising the question and getting it out in front and, and hopefully moving the issue forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Holliday has her, her hand up. Maybe there's a point she wanted to make on something. Go, go ahead.
I'll be very quick. I'll be very quick. I just want to say that there were, the first plan that was presented to the school committee brought us to the opening of the schools. That took months of work by the teachers, the administration and the focus groups. What you saw was the next phase of metrics that was developed for bringing more students in after we evaluate the end of October, beginning of November. Right now, we have six positive cases and about fifty people in quarantine in the schools as a result of outdoor sports activity that's been happening with joint communities outside of the school. But we've been able to, to contact trace and keep the schools on the same path at this juncture, despite the fact that we have six positive cases and fifty people, about fifty people in, in quarantine. That was part of the diligence that the school team and the epidemiologist and Commander Allard all put together. I would really ask all of you to go back and at least look at the first half hour of our school committee last Tuesday night, where you heard Dr. Sue, Commander Allard, as well as our public health director and the public health nurse discuss. Nothing can be black and white, because if a case happens in the Brezner Hand School, it's very different than if it happens in the high school in terms of the ability to contain cohorts and contact trace. So what we did was approve the initial plan under a six and a half hour meeting. And then the teachers pushed back and then we compromised, signed an memorandum of under. And then the teachers pushed back, and then we compromised, signed an memorandum of understanding after they did their closed-door bargaining, which is what happens with unions. We came back, we approved it, and then we looked for the next step in bringing students back. The timing didn't work. So the school committee and the city council got it at about the same time, because that's when it was ready. Thank you.
Thank you. When we get back to the council, again, we're on committee reports, so and I, you know, I want to give a long leash to everybody. But just remember, we're just sort of asking Chair Khan questions. Counselor Zee?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask two questions, and I'll try and keep them to the to the update here. So during the meeting, you know, we talked about, you know, talking about process and so forth. Did not seem in that meeting, based on the reports we heard from from the Vice Chair and others, that the school committee will take any more votes on the further reopening plans. But the way the mayor just described it, it sounds like there will be a vote of the school committee. So I'm wondering if the mayor can clarify if the intention is that the school committee will vote on these new metrics. Or if they did, I was not able to attend that meeting last week, and I wasn't able to watch the whole video. I've watched part of it. And the second question I'd like to ask the mayor, if she's so willing to answer, is does the mayor see any path or is there any plan anywhere that that we envision or see kids being able to go back to school full in person at any point during this school year, the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year? Is there any answer to that, or do we know the answer to that?
Hold on. Mayor Holliday, thank you. Go ahead.
The school committee will continually vote on plans to move forward. Our goal is to get as many students in in-person learning as possible. That is our goal and what we're leaning towards, but it all depends on what happens with with the pandemic. And, you know, we're all very anxious about the number of cases and the surges that are happening across the country as well, parts of our state, the hotspots. We will be voting every step of the way as we go forward on, you know, the next wave. But again, I really encourage you to go back and listen to the first, you know, part of our school committee meeting last Tuesday night, because I think it was really good conversation. It made the school committee feel more comfortable in terms of how fluid this is and how every case has to be evaluated differently. You can't set a metrics for the entire school district. You know, we're trying very hard to get students back in, in early, another twenty-five percent back in, and that's our goal.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anything further for Chair Khan before we leave education? Thank you, Chair Khan. General government, haven't met. That's on me. Licenses and permits? Anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Neighborhood and City Service?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move, we remove ordinance fifty from committee. I guess it's already out, isn't it? Motion to approve ordinance fifty. It's in your packets.
Second.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, this is a long, has been a long and arduous process. The issue, of course, is curb cuts, but it's not just curb cuts. There are many implications of curb cut installation, maintenance, construction materials, et cetera, with in different neighborhoods, different cuts might be appropriate out of some materials, but not in others. I do want to report, however, that the committee voted this version dated September twenty-second favorably by a vote of three to nothing. Let me just backtrack a little and tell you where we went in this, in this in this, this journey. The sponsor, particularly Counselor Wallace, made the circle from the committee and the councilors who were with her on this, Counselor Augerman, with DPS, with neighborhood groups, consulted with a tremendous number of folks in. And it came out as a document that I think is is well drafted, well put together, but still, we can dot some i's and cross some t's. And I believe that there are a couple of what I would term scripters errors, but they might have some some significance and worth considering tonight on the floor. In particular, when we reported out on the twenty-second, this version, I became aware of a version that the council president had marked up on the, and I saw that version on the twenty-third. So I fully anticipate some comment on this. That doesn't alter the fact, a lot of work has gone into it, it's been widely vetted. And and I think that with some minor tweaks, we should be ready to move forward with it tonight.
Thank you very much. Other councilors?
I don't, I don't have my hand raised, but I would be happy to kind of summarize some of the changes here.
Is that, Counselor Tanta raises his hand. Are you?
That'd be fine, that'd be fine.
Okay, Counselor Wallace.
Yeah.
Okay, so this goes back several months, I think it was right around the beginning of the pandemic. And if you all recall, we had brought an earlier version to the floor, and there were a lot of questions, because I think there were some numbers in the ordinance, and there were questions, well, how did you come up with this number? And and where, you know, where are the standards, et cetera? So we took it back to committee, and Counselor Augerman and I worked extensively with DPS Engineering Group. And what's interesting about this is it's technical information that you're taking, and how do you put that into an ordinance? And that's kind of what we went back and forth on, working with DPS. And kind of what we came up with is the ordinance is kind of the bare bones. And the way that this is different now is that we are referencing standards. The DPS is in the process of creating standard details and whatnot, where that is where the technical information is. So in this ordinance, we don't have widths of driveways. We don't have distance from intersections. What we are doing is giving DPS the authority and the discretion to approve these permits based on safety, based on engineering standards. So there may be a lot of legal language in here, but it's actually pretty straightforward. One thing that we did change, you'll notice, we don't call it curb cuts anymore. We call it driveway openings. Curb cuts is just a little more informal. And and honestly, it doesn't matter if the road has a curb or not. What we're talking about are actual driveway openings on city streets. We are not talking about state highway. They have their own process, and that's called an access permit. But this is something that many, many towns do, the state does, because you want to regulate how many openings you have on the road. And I know for Counselor Augerman, in his ward, the issue is some of these projects that may not be under site plan review or subdivision, these residential projects, and they just put in a curb cut or put in a driveway opening, and then you lose parking on the street. There's no regulation of how wide it needs to be. So that's kind of what prompted all this. What's also in here is it talks about the DPS can 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 create standards, and they're in the process of that. So that talks about the standards that they're working on will eventually come to the council to be approved in as an order. So, you know, we'll see what they're proposing, but we don't necessarily need to get in the nitty-gritty of exact width here or there, because we trust them. They are the experts. And again, we've worked with them extensively on this. The nice thing, too, is they are setting up this new standards booklet. So we will have, you know, these driveway standards, but in the future, there may be additional ones that we add in there. So this is a big step for DPS, working with the council, and trying to standardize some of our streets and sidewalks and roads, whatnot. So that's kind of why this is taking so long. The other piece that's in here are updates with notification procedures, things like sidewalk work, when you're going to have a curb cut. And I'll defer to Counselor Augerman if there are any questions. That was kind of his, his area of expertise there. One thing that I do want to point out is that in this document, we did not get into sidewalk materials. This, this shows up, because this is what we were editing and doing a little cleanup in here. But I know the asphalt versus brick versus concrete goes back a couple of councils. And and it would always come, come into our discussions, but that's a bigger discussion. So we tried to steer clear of that, with the exception of, we did want to kind of clean up some wording on temporary asphalt sidewalks. So that's kind of the overview. With that, I would welcome any questions or comments moving forward. Thanks.
Counselor Tanta?
Yeah, thank you. I did go looking for the construction and traffic standards details, and now I know why I couldn't find it.
Yes, they do not exist yet.
Yeah, but it's, it's good to know that it will come before us as an order. In our last discussion, I, you know, I had looked at with particular reference to curb cuts and at other communities codes. And and a lot of communities have appeals processes. So if if the city says, no, you can't do this, then there would be a process to appeal. Did the committee discuss this, or did DPS discuss that at all? Or was, and so if not, was the decision not to have an appeals process, and I'm wondering why?
That is a good question. A lot of what you're, I think the answer to that for now is that there is going to be guidance and procedures and standards provided by DPS. So that doesn't cover it here, but maybe I would defer to Counselor Augerman if he has an answer to that, to that question.
Yeah, no, I did, I did consider that. I suppose some cities and towns have an appeals process, but that that hasn't been the pattern historically here. So, no, we didn't, we never, we never even tried it. I, I mean, just verging into the merits of it. I, I don't know that it's necessary personally as a sponsor. But let me turn to Counselor Connell and then Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, I'll respond just shortly to the counsel at largest question and saying that by having some standards in place, and I think that it's quite clear where things are going, and having an order passed by the council that kind of codifies the details of this, we should be in a position to preempt appeals, because people would see upfront what's going to happen and 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 understand the reasoning behind it. I'm not saying that people won't be occasionally aggrieved, but I agree with the council president that an appellate process drags things out in this case, and I think it's unlikely that we're going to have as many questions from people once they see the details that are codified by the passage of this and its and its regulations.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. I want to agree with Counselor Connell, because it was, what we discussed in committee was that by having a set of standards and posting those standards and making them more public, that there'd be more of an opportunity to have the discussion with the contractor, homeowner, and DPS as part of the process, as opposed to making a decision and having to appeal a decision going forward. So while I don't think we use the phrase, you know, what about an appeal process? I do think we tried to be more transparent, and especially with the public posting of this document in in many ways aligned with state rules, that there'd be no surprises there. So I think that's our approach to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zee?
My only question is, you know, I, the only thing that gives me a little pause now that I'm hearing the discussion a little bit is it seems odd to pass an ordinance that references something that doesn't exist at the moment. So you could have this passed tonight, and effectively it goes into effect immediately. But then it could take a year for the, for that information to come from DPS and have thirty days to be posted and so forth. So my suggestion, so that we don't have to hold off on this, because clearly a lot of work has gone into it, is, you know, just insert a sentence that just says that the the portion that references the this this document that doesn't yet exist goes into effect once the city council passes the first version of it by order. Somebody can wordsmith that a lot nicer than I can, but I just think it's a little bit tenuous to to pass an ordinance that references something that doesn't yet exist. And, you know, while we'd like to think, you know, okay, DPS can maybe get it to us in a couple of weeks, but we really don't have any control over that, and I don't want to give up the city council's power to approve it by order. I think that makes sense. So I would just suggest, maybe as a friendly amendment, to say, you know, section, I think it's twelve fifty-four A two, basically that, you know, this, this, this specific statement shall go into effect upon the passage of the of the first set of standards. And then, once it's passed by order, they last in perpetuity presumably until DPS maybe wants to make a change to it. Does that make sense?
Well, let me, let me go to Counselor Wallace.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it's actually not uncommon at all to pass an ordinance and not have, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong here, but not have the regulations in place. You know, I did a lot of stormwater ordinances or bylaws with different communities, and we would pass just the bare minimum saying that, you know, whoever the permitting authority would be, would have the right to establish regulations. And I believe we, I've seen that also in Newburyport's health ordinances, saying, you know, Board of Health can have regulations. So I don't really have an issue with that, but I do understand where the comment's coming from. Like, if we want to get this out operating now, and we have nothing to rely on, how do we do that? I mean, I guess I would say it's at the discretion of DPS. And because right now, they are actually taking in permits for things like street excavations. And actually, I think one of their permit forms even mentions curb cuts, but not, sometimes it's followed, sometimes it's not. So this is kind of tightening things up. So, you know, I don't want to hold it up, but maybe there is language, you know, to say that it's at their discretion for now. But I, I welcome any comments or questions from that.
Could I, can I make a quick suggestion? I think we can finesse the whole thing. If you go to the top of page two in the packet of the ordinance, and it says, shall be undertaken in compliance with both this section and also the construction and traffic standard details, that's the first time it's mentioned. You could just, instead of having the word "the," you just have "any." So also any construction. So in other words, if there aren't any, there aren't any. That's, you just change that one word, and and you've dealt with the problem.
I would agree to that. Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Mr. President, just for clarity, could you be more specific about chapter and verse where that
Yeah, sure.
suggestion was to take place?
It's section twelve dash fifty-four, and then A apple, the very, very last sentence. That's where the construction and traffic standard details are mentioned. And if you just change the word "the" before construction to "any," then if there aren't any, then there's no, there's no problem. And they can go ahead and they can approve, and we can adopt the ordinance.
Procedurally, would you accept the motion to strike the word "the" so that we can move forward on this?
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is a motion to amend, to change the word "the" to "any," right?
Correct.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, so that's done. Anything else? Oh, I did want to say, just to comfort councilors that haven't been involved in this, the engineer, city engineers have actually already drafted these things, so it's not like they're starting from nothing. They're pretty far along, actually.
That's why my hand was originally up.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm sorry. We should have, we should have told you that. John Eric and his colleagues have written these. They're just not finished yet. Anything, oh, yes, Counselor Khan?
Great, thank you, Council President. I just want to thank the co-sponsors for their work in drafting this and tightening it up and cleaning it up. I did listen to the meeting that was held in early September from the committee and and was able to get a lot of my questions answered by just listening into that. My one comment, and I don't My one comment, and I don't really have an amendment. I thought about trying to put one together, but really on the temporary asphalt issue. And you know, in my mind, I keep thinking of. A situation like Hale Street where if there's ever need to to use asphalt when it comes to public safety. And just having something there temporarily because of the funding for concrete would be, you know, too expensive or maybe cost prohibitive. You know, I thought about maybe a situation where that could be maybe inserted, but at the end of the day, I I did appreciate that maybe a conversation later. About materials may be more beneficial and not really in in this particular effort right now. So I just wanted to just. Make that 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 is something that I would be interested to have some leeway for those situations. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Connell.
Yeah, just in response to the council at largest. Most recent remarks, we started down that road and as any close observer is aware. That's that's a pretty thorny issue depending on where in the city it is and how to craft it. And we ducked, quite frankly, in order to get something more generic. Out the door, and I think that was the correct call at the time. Yeah. Different neighborhoods, different wards specifically. Have different needs and and sometimes asphalt on a temporary basis. It's not our first choice. I don't think anybody would say it is. Has to be laid down, but we tried to place some limits on it and stopped there and say, you know, within two months. The asphalt has to be replaced with a more permanent paving material. But the the question you raise, counselor, is is entirely appropriate. We would have been here for another six months debating the materials themselves. And perhaps not even get an agreement done. If we had tried to push that along with this. Proposed ordinance. So. The point well taken. We're aware of it. We're gonna have to bite it off at some point, just not tonight.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Tantar is next.
Yeah, just just briefly, you know, I I should have asked some questions about this because when I was Ward four council, I got in the middle of a. A couple buzzsaws and and so any consistency. Across the city that that results from from this ordinance would be wonderful because what what happens is. People would be denied a curb cut and then they'd come to me and they'd say, but how about, you know, these are the four. Properties that just got curb cuts and I'm asking for the same thing they got. Why isn't why I'm being denied and they got it. So. So I very much I will support this. I welcome it. I think the sooner we get. The construction traffic details, standard details, the better. Because I and I think I'm happy without there being an appeal as long as as the details, the standards specified in public. So thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Back to Counselor Wallace.
Sure, I just wanted to respond to, I guess, the last two or three comments. I I do agree with Counselor Con and Counselor Tantar. That sometimes you do want an appeals process or you do want. A little bit of discretion for extraordinary circumstances. So I don't think, you know, having some sort of. Language in here, not not tonight, but language that if somebody cannot, you know, stick to these. Requirements like for hardship or whatever, and that could be DPS as well, that they come to the council or. You know, we haven't figured that out yet, but that they ask for it. So for instance, you know, I I need to bring this up. We have asphalt sidewalks on Merrimack Street. If you can't, if DPS couldn't have complied with that for cost reasons. That's understandable perhaps, but you need to come to the council to talk about it, talk about the price differences. So. On the one hand, yes, we need consistent standards and and I'll encourage our engineering department to move those along because they are. They are fairly close. But on the other hand, you do need a little bit of leeway. So hopefully we can find that balance. Thanks.
Thank you. Any final words from the counselors? Seeing that, let's do a roll call on the ordinance first.
Mr. Roll call ordinance 50 motion approved is amended with the insertion of the word any. Instead of the word the in section 1254A. Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor President Argument.
Yes.
11 yes, motion for first reading passes.
Thank you. Anything else in neighborhood and city services?
No, sir.
Great. Thank you very much. Planning and development.
Thank you, Council President. A motion to receive and file communication 257.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. So I think this is a good example of how civic engagement really does work around here. We did receive a letter from Judy Timman regarding what happened at 1214 Harrison Street this summer, and. I won't go into those details. I think they're being discussed right now at the ZBA meeting, but. We'll go into the details of what she wrote in her letter, which was really good. And um. She listed a few concerns, basically how. In the community, we've we've lost some of our historic buildings because it just doesn't seem like we have good oversight. Our boards are writing good conditions for contractors to go by and. Our boards are also writing decisions themselves and we we the first meeting we had on this, we only had about 15 or 20 minutes and. We had a good discussion with staff, but we decided to keep in committee and keep continue the conversation. The second meeting we had, we had participation from the historic commission's chair and vice chair. Where we had the opportunity to hear from the vice chair who'd been discussing what's been going on across the country during COVID for a lot of the historic buildings. And how communities were dealing with it, and they were starting to pull together these code of permit compliance affidavits. That builders were being required to sign so they understood what they were working to when they pulled their permits. So. We asked staff, could they go forward and make something like that for our community? And that was the direction we went. At the same time. Counselor McCauley suggested that we pull in at the next meeting, the chairs of the planning board, historic commission and the ZBA to discuss this. This process. And that was our last meeting, which went really well. We had good participation with all the boards. What we ended up with was it was the code and permit compliance affidavit that Andy and Jennifer did a great job pulling together, which is basically. An affidavit that the contractor has to sign stating he understands and has read. The various permits, building codes, zoning ordinances, Dcod, all of the. Demolition delay ordinance and has to sign on it. So this should help going forward. It's a good form that will help reduce errors by the contractors because they have to sign this and state that they understand what they're working to. And it's good proof that should anyone argue they didn't understand it, then we have legal standing here. So I think the overall conversation was really good. We had a. Chair Sontag commenting on some of the latest historic decisions that have been given to the planning board regarding. Some really well worried conditions because that is a fundamental here that we need to have the good conditions written by the historic commission. So the ZBA and planning board has something to work with, but. Overall, the process worked. I think we spent three meetings discussing this letter, but in the end, we came out with a good. A good finish. So for something that we're receiving and filing, I think we did our due diligence and I just wanted to thank Counselor McCauley for his. Recommendation on bringing the the boards in at the last meeting because I think it really did help the conversation.
Thank you, counselor. All those in favor of receiving and filing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Next item.
Our keeping ordinance 211 preservation restriction on 272 High Street in committee. We did not have all of the documentation in the preservation restriction. Specifically, all the pictures that were noted throughout. So we'll be keeping that in committee and bringing it up the next meeting. So that's it for planning and development.
Okay, thank you very much. Public safety.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to collectively receive and file application 10 and application 11.
Second.
The reason for this is these applications downtown trick or treat. The chamber has withdrawn their application and canceled the event. Application 10 witches night out, then withdrawn their application as a as an organized event. And have it has evolved to a self-directed type of function. Do as you may along the way without any organization going forward. So in both of these cases. You know, we we don't. We don't have any rules to to make decisions on. So I'd like to receive and file these.
Thank you. All those in favor up, Counselor Vogel. Counselor Vogel. Where'd you go?
Sorry.
I think you're muted. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question to the chair. The withdrawing particularly as you mentioned the. Which is night out, you know, do as you may, whatever is did the chamber state that they don't want, they're they're not going to organize it. Is it? Obviously, it's COVID related, but. That's kind of a mixed message. Do it if you want, but we're not going to organize it. I'm just curious as to how that conversation went.
So the chamber withdrew their application as an organized event, right? So they would continue with those things that weren't. That they could do socially distance, for example, like decorating the light posts. For those establishments that wanted to encourage witches to visit them on that night. They would have to follow socially distance rules. Anyway, the chamber typically had some other events, contests, etc. That they canceled. So. It 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 devolved into a self-directed. If someone would like to dress as a witch and visit the city. We had encouraged them to do so and and socially appropriate manner and, you know, share their money with our local merchants.
Thank you.
Other comments? All those in favor of receiving and filing, say aye.
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 All's opposed? Okay. Was there anything else in public safety?
That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Public utilities.
Motion to collectively approve transfer 85 as amended in committee and shown in the packet and order 213.
Second.
Second.
So I thank you, Ms. President. So the committee on public utilities was referred both of these items. We had a meeting last Monday. To discuss both of them. We had the three committee members, counselors, Tantar, Shan, and myself. We had Andy Port, Director of Planning, Jordi Vining, Project Manager available as well. We talked about the project at length. I'll try and summarize our conversation as quickly as I can. So this this is a two sort of two two-pronged project, if you will. One aspect of it is. Working to protect the the wastewater treatment facility. And the second is to try and complete the portion of trail. That was left undone as a result of the the discovered contamination, which, as we know. Has been has been resolved and it's now unofficially open, but this would be to take it to an official. Completion of that. And so this actually goes back to the so-called Dewberry Report, which was a report. Dewberry's a consultant. They were engaged to come up with strategies to protect the plant. They came up with several different options and those were summarized and discussed in detail in a in a like a 40-page report. And we talked about that. The option that they favored was option number two. Option number two includes a revetment, which is really what the heart of this project is or the heart of this funding is. But it also included other things as well, more to the tune of 4.5 to $5 million. So in a in a sense, this project, this 1.7 million dollars. Is a part of that and it was discussed or 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 talked about as a phased approach. So basically, there isn't money to do the full thing. But this takes the recommendation of Dewberry at that at that at that at that option, if you will, option number two, and takes out the parts that we're able to do today. So that's the first part was sort of where did this, where did this plan come from? The second thing was, you know, does this cost include the trail? So this does the 1.7 million dollars, which is a combination of the gap funding, which is what we're approving. As well as the grant does include both the trail completion as well as the revetment and Birm project together. We discussed whether the cost for the trail could be separated out so that one could follow it. It can't exactly be separated, but. The estimate was somewhere around about $250,000 of this was considered the trail aspect. And that gets into the funding sources. So the funding sources shown in the transfer are a couple of different places. So. Again, one is you have obviously the biggest part is the million dollars, which is the acceptance in order to 13. But the gap funding that we're coming up with is a combination of sewer project. Leftover funds, which is a combination of various accounts that you can see in the transfer crane truck, Bobcat, whatever. And then some general fund items as well. And we discussed at length, you know, that. Speak for myself on this, that it didn't feel comfortable to pay for the trail with sewer money. And the way that it shakes out, basically, it doesn't end up working out that way. So the the trail, let's say, is about 250,000. Again, not a precise number, but in the ballpark. And so in addition to this sewer money, the grant, then you also have $150,000 from the CPA money. And $100,000 for mass trails and $10,000 from coastal trails. If you add that up, that adds up to 260. And basically, it's it's about in the same range as the trail. So so that kind of gives you a sense for the separation. And how the funding is working out. We talked about priorities for the sewer department and sewer enterprise fund. Is this the top priority? There was some discussion with Chris Pratt, who was also present. He's the operator at the wastewater treatment plant. And obviously, the plant is the crown jewel of the sewer system, right? And so there are other concerns. With respect to this, particularly on the collection side with some of the other lift stations. But there was there was agreement that, you know, this this was a big concern and that, as he put it, the 2013. Storm was a was an eye opener as as far as, you know, the need to, you know, protect the plant in one way or another. And obviously, the plant serves. The entire system, whereas, you know, a lift station is important, but it it only serves a neighborhood or a few neighborhoods or depending on how it's it's fitted out. More things. Next thing was neighborhood concern. So they, the planning department in particular, Jordi has. Said he's been working with the direct debutters, which particularly are a couple residential units on the Joppa end of the of the project and then on the other side, the AYC. And, you know, we talked about the what is this thing going to look like? Are there going to be impacts to residents? And so basically, the entire Birm and revetment sort of stay within the confines of the plant. And at the outer edges of the of this, because it has to ramp up and then ramp back down to meet ADA, we're talking about 18 inches to two feet. So there should not be a huge. Impact of views or anything like that or or anything. I think the biggest neighborhood impact will be during construction. Because obviously, this will involve heavy equipment. But fortunately, there aren't really too many sort of direct direct debutters. And so. And no impact to water street residents or anything like that. So folks should expect in the neighborhood and residents, a very similar thing to when the odor upgrades were done a few years ago. Even when the recent work was done to clean up the the remaining contaminants. Which is, you know, the exit 56 to Federal Street to to the plant and then back. There will be heavy equipment involved, as you might imagine. Moving lots of earth and and what have you. So that's the neighborhood aspect. There are no pumps. While the Dewberry plan contemplates perhaps having to have pumps inside the plant in the future to put to push water out. That's not here. We're just basically talking about effectively, in a sense, a wall in one way, for lack of a better term, along the perimeter of the plant against the river. As far as permitting goes. This has already been to Concom. They already have the permanent hand. Conservation was supportive of the project in in large part because of the importance to the plant. There is a 15% contingency built in. And basically, at this point, they need to finish up the final engineering on the project and then get it out to bid. This money, particularly the grant money, is limited by the fiscal year. So there there is some expectation to pay a little bit more. In in comparison to trying to do the project on any other schedule, but in order to meet that fiscal year timeline. There's expected to be a little bit of a premium to get somebody to do it faster, and that's been accounted for there. The last thing I will say is just to address the transfer, the amendment that was made at the bottom. So when we discussed this in committee, there was consensus that it was important that any unused funds go back to where they came from, particularly sewer funds. Since those are ratepayer funds as opposed to, say, general fund tax dollars. So if there is surplus at the end. That they get that Ethan helped with this language that it basically go back to wherever it came from in a prorata portion based on on the transfer. We obviously always hope for projects to come in for less than. We obviously always hope for projects to come in for less than we hope, but it sounded like the most likely way, there could be some surpluses. There's an ongoing negotiation with National Grid to see if they will kick in something for this project. The assumption here is that they will give nothing, but the, the hope is that they will give something. And the reason they're involved in this is that there's a large electrical line that runs in that area. And, you know, that's going to add some complexity to the project that but for that cable would not exist. So that's kind of the argument. And I guess that that discussion is ongoing, but in order to meet timelines for sending it out to bid and, and again, meeting that fiscal year. So in summation, transfer eighty-five basically gives you the gap funding that you need. And order two thirteen basically modifies the CPA on so-called Project Six C that we did a few weeks ago and accepts the million dollars, as well as takes in the, the hundred thousand dollar grant as well. So that's why I motioned to, they all go together, so motion for them to go. I think I hit all the points in my notes. Of course, always welcome my colleagues, Counselor Tantar, Shan, to fill in anything if I missed it that was germane or relevant and, and can answer, we can answer any questions too. And looks like there's some staff on the participant side. So you've got a wealth of people who can try and help if there are questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, last thing.
Oh.
Three zero in committee.
Okay. Other counselors or questions, comments, debate? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Because it's a large sum of money, I'm going to do a roll call because I'm hopelessly middle class. We don't have to, but let's do a roll call. Oh, Clerk Jones, you are muted.
I am all set now, I think. This is a motion to collectively approve transfer eighty-five and order two thirteen. Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Argon?
Yes.
Eleven yes, motion passed.
Thank you. Anything else, public utilities?
Nothing else tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Rules?
Nothing tonight.
Good as the order. Counselor Z?
I just wanted to offer a brief update that I've been working with the clerk on trying to facilitate the return to some hybrid or in-person meetings. And right now, the discussion is, is between him and I, I think, and the Council President, largely centered around picking technology. This is something that in the, in the remote meeting plans, we have deferred to the clerk. But I am trying to make suggestions just to be helpful. So I don't have any specific timeline, but I think it was heard pretty loud and clear that, that people want high-quality audio and video and so forth. And I'm trying my best to help with that. And just wanted to keep you apprised so that, you know, I don't, I don't think we'll be, I, I'm just speaking for myself. I don't see us necessarily meeting in person on October or whatever our next meeting is, twenty-sixth. But I do, I do think that, you know, right after, right after our poor city clerk is relieved from election duties and that passes, that there may be an opportunity sometime in November based on ordering the technology, testing it, making sure it works and that we're going to be happy with it, that we could, we could see our first hybrid meeting. So just wanted to keep you posted as we go. Thank you.
I'll build on that. Just to remind everyone, it's probably going to be at the senior center downstairs where the best audiovisual equipment is, but we'll see. I just had one thing. You probably, some of you noticed at the last meeting when we did the budget, that the, the chat function was on and also Q and A. I've corrected that. Zoom had changed the defaults on, on Q and A, and I didn't catch it in time. But I have it fixed now. I mean, basically, the problem with those functions is, you know, there's only supposed to be one speaker at a time. You're not really supposed to be having sidebar conversations. So really can't, it just doesn't lend itself to city council work, I, you know. So that had to be stamped out. And I, it also should not become an opportunity for members of the public to say things, as some did, that they can't say during their two-minute verbal speech. You know, we can't, just as we don't attack each other here, you know, there's, there's no right in the public to attack counselors. So that function just cannot be allowed, those sort of sidebar chats. That's all I had. How about a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Good night.